Tonight's a special evening. This is always, the board's reorganizational meeting is always the first Monday. So I get the pleasure of calling the meeting to order and then quickly turning it over to a new chairman. But the first action this evening will actually be the swearing-in ceremony for five of the commissioners, for new commissioners, and one current commissioner who will be re-s sworn in, Mr. Bill Lohhahn. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Zach Allman and the Honorable Senior Resident Superior Court Judge Jeff Carpenter to go down and do their, do the swearing-in.
Do you, Zach Allman, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Zach Allman, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful, bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof?
I will.
And that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Zach Allman, further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, that you will not allow your actions as County Commissioner to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help you God?
I will.
And do you, Zach Allman, solemnly swear that you will administer justice without favoritism to anyone, that you will do equal law and right to all persons, that you will not knowingly or willingly take by yourself or any other person any fee, gift, gratuity, or reward whatsoever for any matter or thing done by you or to be done by virtue of your office, except the salary and allowances by law provided, and that you will well and truly execute faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Stanley County Commissioner to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations, Mr. Commissioner.
Thanks, sir.
The next commissioner that will be sworn in this evening is Mr. Mike Barbie and the Honorable District Court Judge John Nance will do the swearing-in.
Do you, Mike Barbie, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Mike Barbie, further solemnly swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you, Mike Barbie, further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, that you will not allow your actions as County Commissioner to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help you God?
I will.
And do you, Mike Barbie, further swear that you will administer justice without favoritism to anyone, that you will do equal law and right to all persons, that you will not knowingly or willingly take by yourself or any other person any fee, gift, gratuity, or reward whatsoever for any matter or thing done by you or to be done by virtue of your office, except the salary and allowances provided by law, that you will well and truly execute faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Stanley County Commissioner to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations, Commissioner Barbie.
The next commissioner to be sworn in is Mr. Lane Fur and the Honorable Clerk of Court, Mike Honeycutt, will do the swearing-in.
Do you, Lane Fur, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Lane Fur, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Lane Fur, further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, that you will not allow your actions as County Commissioner to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Lane Fur, solemnly swear that you will administer justice without favoritism to anyone, that you will do equal law and right to all persons, that you will not knowingly or willingly take by yourself or any other person any fee, gift, gratuity, or reward whatsoever for any matter or thing, by what you've done or to be done by virtue of your office, except the salary and allowances by law provided, and that you will well and truly execute faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Stanley County Commissioner to the best of your skill and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations, sir.
Yes, sir. be sworn in this evening is Mr. Tommy Jordan and the Honorable Clerk of Court, Michael Honeycutt, will do that, the honors of that swearing-in as well.
Do you, Tommy Jordan, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God? Do you, Tommy Jordan, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? Do you, Tommy Jordan, further swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, that you will not allow your actions as County Commissioner to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help you God? Do you, Tommy Jordan, solemnly swear that you will administer justice without favoritism to anyone, that you will do equal law and right to all persons, and that you will not knowingly or willingly take by yourself or any other person any fee, gift, gratuity, or reward whatsoever for any matter or thing that you've done or to be done by virtue of your office, except the salary and allowances by law provided, and that you will well and truly execute faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Stanley County Commissioner to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God? Congratulations, sir.
Do you will, sir, please? It's too long.
Thank you.
The last commissioner to be sworn in this evening, Mr. Willie D. Lohhahn Jr., and Madam Clerk Tyler Brummitt will do the, do the honors of swearing. Bill into office.
of the United States, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, that you will not allow your actions as County Commissioner to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of County Commissioner according to the best of your skill and ability according to law, that you will not allow your actions as County Commissioner to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, solemnly swear that you will administer justice without favoritism to anyone, that you will do equal law and right to all persons, that you will not knowingly or willingly take by yourself or any other person any fee, gift, gratuity, or reward whatsoever for any matter or thing done by you or to be done by virtue of your office, except the salary and allowances by law provided, and that you will well and truly execute faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Stanley County Commissioner to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly swear that you will administer justice without favoritism to anyone, that you will do equal law and right to all persons, that you will not knowingly or willingly take by yourself or any other person any fee, gift, gratuity, or reward whatsoever for any matter or thing done by you or to be done by virtue of your office, except the salary and allowances by law provided, and that you will well and truly execute faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Stanley County Commissioner to the best of your skill and ability according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Willie D. Lohhahn Junior, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
For Senior Services Board, Commissioner Barbie. For Rural Transportation Planning Organization, Commissioner Jordan and Commissioner Swain as alternate. For Water and Sewer Authority, myself and Commissioner Farr as the alternate. For Centralina Council of Governments, Commissioner Aman. Alternate, Commissioner Barbie. And for the Cardinal Innovations Health Board, Commissioner Lohhan.
We have a motion to accept those commission appointments. Is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion about the commission appointments as presented? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries. We have to establish the meeting dates for 2019. Should be item G on page two. The meeting dates as presented, to my knowledge, are pretty much the same that we had this past year. County Manager.
Yes, that's, that's correct, sir. The one exception, or not exception, but we don't meet on the Monday. And it's noted for January 21st because, due to the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. And so that, that meeting's backed up to a Tuesday. The rest of them, due to the fact that we only meet once a month during the summer months, we are able to avoid that, a holiday. So, so it's, it stays very consistent with the last couple of years at the board. In terms of the number of meetings and the dates of the meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. If there's no other concerns or changes to those dates, is there a motion to approve the dates as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the dates as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lohhan, is there a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the dates as presented for the 2019 Commissioner Meeting. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Item H on page three. Approval of the 2019 County Holiday Schedule for County Employees. There's no additions or changes. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
Shall we approve as presented?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Is there a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the 2019 County Holiday Schedule as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. There is one announcement before we close the reorganizational meeting. During any regular meeting of the Board, the County Commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as the Board of Governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District or the Piney Point Water District, may at their discretion recess a Commissioner's Regular Meeting and reconvene as the Board of Governors of either of the above bodies, in order to conduct business matters related to that entity. Is there a motion to adjourn the reorganizational meeting? Is there a second? All those in favor of adjourning the reorganizational portion of our meeting, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. And I think if we don't have any objections, I think some folks wanted just a very brief recess, no more than five minutes, to maybe take some pictures with family and check on some things. Thank you, withstand in recess for five minutes. I'll call the regular meeting of the December 3rd, 2018 Commissioner Meeting to order. I prepared an invocation this evening to read just some inspirational words, rather, from a publication called Words of Hope. It begins by saying, "In today's world, politics is played out much like old sports rivalries. The teams have blind hatred for each other, often regardless of truth, reality, or common sense. The current losing team, whoever's not in power, usually spends most of its time of whoring, disparaging, and making up lies about the opposing side. And political pundits often create caricatures of their rivals and then attack them. And too often, we mistake this kind of behavior for hard truthful news, which is just like mistaking a pep rally for the actual game. In the Bible, Ephesians 4 calls us to be humble, gentle, and patient. It says we are to make every effort to be unified and peaceful. Unfortunately, we aren't very good at it when it comes to politics. We often do the opposite, continually looking for reasons to call names and point fingers. As we strive to be the people God calls us to be, we might consider switching off the radio or the television and putting down the newspaper the next time we encounter the inflammatory statements that plague our society. We could remind ourselves that everyone is created in God's image, has value, and should be given equal respect. God doesn't make caricatures, he only makes people. As we move forward, we should continually ask ourselves, can you recognize his image even in the people who disagree with you? And can they recognize the same within you?" And that's how that, I guess, devotional almost closes. And it, it just seems very appropriate for this evening in the political world that we're in, the new board that we have up here. I, I challenge all of you to work together. I challenge us to work with the public, other boards and municipalities, and become one. If you'll join me in a short prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, as we begin this journey as a board, guide us to make sound decisions and help us bear with one another in love, especially when we disagree. As we work together, please give us the foresight to see your image in others and grant us the ability to project your image toward them. We ask all these things in your name. Amen. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think there is one change to the agenda this evening. We need to add an additional item. If we could call that item number 10. We need to add a budget amendment to create a project fund, which you should have in front of you, it was paper clipped when you sat down. And 10B would be the acceptance of the lowest responsible bidder for a project that we'll discuss. If I can have a motion to approve that agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion, we approve the agenda.
There a second? There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number one on tonight's agenda is the Fiscal Year 1718 Audit Presentation. Mr. Alan Thompson is the presenter this evening. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Well, good evening to everyone. I'm gonna see if I can pop this up real quick. But in case, there is a audit presentation folder there at your desk. There's a couple of things I gotta read, just to make sure I do my job here. There were no significant audit findings there on page one. On page two, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no uncorrected misstatements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated November 7th. Were unaware that management consulted with any outside accountants, auditors, and again, no other findings or issues. Couple of things to note in this year's audit as opposed to prior year audits, and I'll go as deep as you would like, but I think the numbers are on page four. The county did receive an unmodified report, which is a quote-unquote clean report. No findings. When you look at this report compared to previous reports, if you were to go to the very back of the audit report when you receive it, the schedule federal and state awards will be different because the state auditor decided, decided that all the Medicaid and other direct payments would be reported on the state's report rather than on individual counties. There was a separate agreed upon procedures audit performed for that, for the state auditor's office. The county had no findings, so that report was also a good report. And there's a, a statement I may talk more about in just a minute, it's called GASB 75. It's just an acronym there for Accounting Standard for Governments, that had a restatement on your business type activities and on your governmental activities on Exhibit 1 and 2. It had to do with actuarial determinations and not with the fund balance statements that you govern the county by. But it was a significant number on that Exhibit 1. Approximately 3.4, sorry, $9 million. And basically what they're doing is taking, OPEB is what it's called, Other Post-Employment Benefits, where they're taking the state retirement benefits of health insurance, doing actuarial study, taking the future value of it, discounting it back to a present value, and sticking it as a liability on the balance sheet. You may not care about that, but if you ever look at the financial statements and you see this big restatement on Exhibits 1 or 2, at least you'll know what that's about. And as you look through it, when you get it, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer that. But it was done statewide, counties, municipalities, school districts, et cetera. So everybody had a similar issue, depending on the number of employees and age, et cetera, based on that actuarial study. Nothing like an accountant going nuts talking about numbers, so I apologize. What the attempt here to do is to pull key numbers outside of the, out of the audit report, and so that they have some context, just to present the four preceding years. So looking at that top number, you see total fund balance in general fund at $25,494. If you were to go back to 14, you see that same number is $19 million. It's increasing every year. Unavailable fund balance at 6.7, 14 is 4.8. Committed and assigned is 5 million, you go back, it's 4.2. General fund expenditures, 61,446. Fund balance available as a percentage of your general fund is 30.47. And then you see the revenues over and under expenses before transfers and contributions. And you see your general fund there at 1.7 million. The Greater Baden Water and Sewer District at 17,000. The West Stanley at $86,000 profit. Utility fund there at a 486 loss. The Piney Point at 18,000 profit and Airport Fund at a $1,454 loss. What we attempted to do there in the next section is show, from a cash flow perspective, how much of the previous gain or loss may have had a depreciation expense in it. And you're all aware depreciation expense is not a cash item, even though it may have some impact on future capital outlet amounts. Then you see your total fixed assets there at 47 million with accumulated appreciation of 24. Cash at 2.7 in utility funds, or 2.2, I'm sorry. And then the cash and the fund balance is there for each particular fund. Cash in your general fund at 21,48. If you were to go back to 14, you can see where it's 16,640. Greater Baden at 184. West Stanley Waste Water Treatment Plant, 177. Utility fund at $1,587. Piney Point at 329. And the Airport at 22. Other governmental at 280. Other governmental includes grants, specific projects where you may have spend downs or get significant cash in. So the timing on that is real important. And the cash or fund balance can vary significantly depending on where the project is or where the grant is. Then you see again, the general fund, fund balance at 25,494. Fund balance in Greater Baden at 3,783. The West Stanley at 1,362. Utility fund at 13,697. Piney Point, 374. Airport at 17,327. And other governmental's at 248. You see where the property tax rates there consist across the board. Collection percentage is up every year across the board. Collection percentage is excluding motor vehicles, up every year as well. And the reason we exclude motor vehicles, as you know, they changed DMV, where it's collecting motor vehicle taxes now. And on the audit report itself, it'll show 100% collected, so you want to see what it might look like outside of that. And we'll show in a minute, in a pie chart, where what percentage your property taxes are of your total general fund revenue to show how important the collection percentage is to the operation of the general fund. Property valuation, you see there 4.8 billion. Total levy amount at 32 million. And then the debt analysis excluding compensated absence, OPEB, net pension liabilities. Total amounts, 29,781. And then the breakdown of your general fund revenues there, with the total being 62,807. And the breakdown of your general fund expenditures there, 61,030,000. You go to the next page there, you see on the top, the analysis of fund balance. You can see what we looked at previously with the total fund balance and the general fund is increasing every year. Unavailable fund balance there in red may deviate depending on specific amounts or state statute amounts. On the bottom, you see fund balances available. You see the group weighted average in red, Stanley County's in blue. And then on the next page, you see the analysis of cash and fund balance in pie charts that we talked about previously, with the total cash being 23,629 and total fund balance is 62,288. And on the following page, you see the collection percentage we previously referenced, where Stanley County is getting closer to the group weighted average there. The, the only group weighted average we had was previous year at 98.06 and Stanley County at 97.59 for the current year. On the bottom, you see the total property valuation and levy amounts. And then on the following page, you see governmental and business type debt as whole, as, as part of the pie chart, as whole. On the bottom, you see the breakdown of general fund revenue. And this is chart I was mentioning earlier, you see the total ad lorum taxes as a percent of your total general fund revenue is 51.95, and that's why a collection percentage of property tax is such a big deal. And the following page, on page 10, you see the breakdown of your general fund expenses there. You know, education, human services, public safety, all being big parts of that. And with that, as you get your audit report, as it clears the LGC, if you've got questions of me or our firm or anything that's in this tonight, happy to answer any questions you may have, not just tonight. But our firm's number will be in that audit report, and I'm happy to take a call if I happen to be out. Tell the person to give me, give you my cell number, I'll be happy to talk to you anytime. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have of me.
Any commissioners have questions for Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Lohhan.
Mr. Thompson, the group weighted average.
Yes, sir.
Who is, who makes up that group?
I couldn't tell you specifically, sir, but I can get you a list of them. And I'd be happy to email it to Toby or the manager and let him forward it to you, happy to do that.
Do you know if it would be groups that are counties that are similar size?
It's similar sized populations is what I understand it to be. And, and I'll say this is a downfall to doing that, but it's really about the only benchmark we have. We do that for some of the towns we do. And in the town part, it really gets skewed. And all I can do is apologize to my inland towns because there's some beach towns in there. So it depends a lot, if you get, if I go to group weighted average on collections and I got a beach town that collects 100% property taxes, and I got an inland rural town, then it's skewed, but that's the only benchmark I've got. So I apologize, it might be skewed, but that's, that's what I can get my hands on.
Any further questions? We have a motion to accept this audit. A motion to accept the audit, is there a second? Motion and a second to accept the audit tonight as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Item number two on tonight's agenda is the Appointments to the Senior Services Advisory Board. Presenter, Ms. Becky Wimhoff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. And on behalf of our department, I want you to know how we're looking forward to working with all of you this coming year. I am here tonight to ask for your appointment to our advisory board. We have five members whose term has expired. Two of those five wish to be reappointed for another three years. And three, and we have three new appointees that I am asking for your appointment to our board. Ann Lauder and Kent Truel, their term has expired, but they wish to be reappointed to our board, to our board for another three-year term. Gail Barbie, Christine or Chris Vaughn, and Ross Newland wish to be appointed to our board. And they will be replacing Vanessa Chambers, Robin Lentz, and Wayne Sasser. And all of these appointments will, will be for three-year terms expiring October 30th, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Wimhoff. Is there any questions for the Senior Services Director? How does the board wish to proceed? I have a motion on the floor to accept the slate of advisory board members as presented by the Senior Services Director. Do I have a second? Motion and a second to accept the Senior Services Advisory Board members as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Item three on the agenda tonight are Planning Board, is the Planning Board Appointments. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you this evening, you have a slate of potential folks for appointment to the Planning Board. Seven-member board, one member is eligible to be reappointed to a three-year term and two members, two new members are needed for a three-year term ending February 21st. I do know that you, there were some applications included in here, and we, we received some after the agenda was printed, and so we forwarded those to you. So hopefully everyone got that full slate of applications. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Commissioner Barbie, I'd like to table that, so we can get some more information on this, table it for next meeting.
There's a motion to table the Planning Board Appointments until January 3rd, 4th? Monday, January 7th. There's a second from Commissioner Morgan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we shall vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Vote will carry six to one. Agenda item number four, Board of Adjustments Appointments. Presenter, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You also have appointments before you for the Board of Adjustment, it's a nine-member board, seven regular members and two alternates. Two regular members are eligible to be reappointed to three-year terms. One alternate is requested to become a regular member for a three-year term. And one alternate member needs to fill their unexpired term, which ends in June of 2019. Again, there were applications included in your packet, but I do know that there were additional applications that were sent to you for consideration, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barbie.
I also like to, because some time to look at the applicants and the ones on there. I would like to have more time, so I'd like to table this to the next meeting also.
Thank you. There's a motion to table the Board Appointments for Board of Adjustments by Commissioner Barbie, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. The motion will pass six to one. Item number five on tonight's agenda is a Letter of Support for Monarch, for a Monarch Grant Initiative. Presenter, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Actually, Chairman Swain attended a meeting along with myself, and I believe there were several staff members from our Health and Human Services, both DSS and Health and EMS at this meeting as well, last week, where Monarch's actually kicking off a federal grant program where they're actually going to be adding, I think, 10 additional jobs here locally at their headquarters here in Albemarle. And this grant really is about improving interagency coordination, collaboration, and facilitating easier access. And certainly with the opioid issue hanging over our community, interagency coordination, collaboration, and facilitating easier access are all things that we, we need to pay attention to. And so Commissioner Swain had asked me to put together a letter for the Board's consideration. A drafted letter is included in your packet, and we would ask the Board to consider formal support for Monarch's grant efforts and authorize staff to execute that letter of their support. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Are there any questions for County Manager Lucas? Congratulations, you're a legend. Are there any questions for the County Manager? Is there a representative for Monarch here? I know, would you like to come up and say anything?
Thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners, we appreciate so much your support. We feel a sincere obligation to the residents of Stanley County to be good stewards of this funding that the federal government has allowed us to have, and we thank you for your letter of support.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to approve the letter of support this evening? Motion by Commissioner Lohhan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Aman. Is there any further discussion about the letter, changes, edits? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item six on tonight's agenda is the North Carolin- Item six on tonight's agenda is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' Annual Goals Conference. We have to elect from the seven of us a voting delegate that can attend this meeting on January 2nd, I'm sorry, January 10th and 11th in Raleigh. I'll open the floor. I, I know I cannot attend those days, so I'll open the floor for nominations of somebody that would want to attend. It has to be a Commissioner, though. I think Commissioner Morgan has self-nominated himself. If, if there's no opposition to that, do we have to formally vote on that? There's a motion on the floor to elect Commissioner Morgan, Vice Chairman Morgan, as the voting delegate for our board at the annual goals conference on January 10th and 11th in Raleigh. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Allman. If there's no other discussion, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number seven is the resolution to levy an additional quarter cent sales tax. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, the majority of the voters in Stanley County on Election Day, November 6th, 2018, voted in favor of an additional quarter cent sales tax as part of the quarter cent sales tax advisory referendum. The certified results are in your packet. The board has also provided the required 10 days notice of its intent to levy the additional quarter cent sales tax. That notice was published in the Tuesday, Tuesday before Thanksgiving edition of the Stanley News and Press. And that was the intent to levy the additional quarter cent sales tax for the purpose of funding educational initiatives in Stanley County. So the action that the staff has put together this evening is consider and approve the resolution, the resolution authorizing the North Carolina Department of Revenue to begin levying an additional quarter cent sales tax in Stanley County effective April 1, 2019. And the reason for that, the Department of Revenue, there's a 90-day wait. So if you don't take action this evening, if you didn't take action until January 7th, you would actually, wouldn't start, we wouldn't be able to start collecting revenue until July 1, because they do it on a quarterly basis. So if you want to start April 1st, we would need to take action sometime in the month. So that's why this is, item's on your agenda, and we had to have a 10-day notice, which was the reason why the previous board didn't take action on this, because we had to wait until the certified results were done, which was the 16th. Had to give the 10 days notice once the certified results. So that's why, decided it's before you this evening and wasn't taken up by the previous board of commissioners. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Resolution's in your packet. This, this resolution's, uh, this resolution's a, a template from the Department of Revenue that we just simply filled in the, filled in the blanks with the information that was pertinent and relevant to Stanley County.
Thank you, County Manager. What's the pleasure of the board? There's a motion from Commissioner Jordan to approve the attached resolution for the quarter cent sales tax to begin levy on August 1st, 20, April 1st, 2019. Won't give me a calendar. Is there any other, I'm sorry, is there a second? Second from Commissioner Fur. Is there any other discussion? See none. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seven is the reaffirmation of our Code of Ethics. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's the next item on the agenda, so we're, we're, we'll go, we'll proceed. Code of Ethics. This is, this, this item in the board, per North Carolina General Statutes 160A-86, needs to be reaffirmed by December 31st of each year, and you have the, the Code of Ethics in your packet for review and consideration.
Thank you, County Manager. Is there any discussion about the Code of Ethics? Questions?
No, there has not been any changes since the initial time it was ratified, and the, the initial ratification and then the subsequent approvals each time. It's the, it's the same as was, was created for commissioners, based on the, basically the template that the School of Government and the legislature created when it was initially adopted.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Is there a motion to approve to comply with North Carolina General Statute 160A-86? Motion from Commissioner Barbie, is there a second? Second from Commissioner Jordan. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number nine is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion has been made to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Allman. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item 10 was an addition to the agenda this evening. Presenter will be County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Appreciate you considering this add-on item to your agenda. The bids were actually opened up shortly after the agenda was sent out last Thursday. And these bids are for the Riverstone Industrial Park Project, which the board purchased the land in Riverstone, and ever since, we've been working with engineers to develop the necessary water sewer, road access for, for this park that's, is actually situated in Stanfield on Browns Hill Road, just south of the Locust city limits. And so what you have before you this evening is a budget amendment to recognize the $950,000 grant that we received from the North Carolina Department of Commerce through the Utility Development Fund, and recognizing $200,000 from the general fund from, from reserves to fund this project. You can see the construction, the bid came in, and the bid information in the bid tab from our engineer are included in your packet, came in at about 1.13, and we're just recognizing additional dollars to cover the administration of that project by the engineer. They're basically the oversight of it, getting, reviewing the pay submittals from the, the low bid contractor, and so there's a cost associated with their oversight of the project. And so that's the additional, additional money's been put in there to cover that. And so it ends up being a budget amendment about 1.15 million. And then you also have the information in there about the bid. The NJR Group, who was the lowest responsible bidder, is actually a Stanley County firm. Nathan Russell is the principal of that organization. I'll be happy to answer any questions. This, what this will do is will, it will bring the, this is the water line that will be inside the park, and it, and we won't go all the way throughout the park, but the initial stubbing the water line in, bringing the water line into the park, it'll actually be a sewer pump station and some sewer laterals just in the initial part of the park, and the outfall line that will run the sewer across the street to the pump station for Locust, and it'll also stub in a road, so you'll actually have a formal road entrance into the park, and that road won't go very far back, maybe 50 feet or so, and then it will have some gravel base beyond that, just for a little ways. And so we just don't know where the road's going to go and where the first tenant may want to locate their building, so we don't want to spend a lot of money. But we do want to create a, an entrance to the park, so it looks like it's an industrial park, and certainly we need to get the sewer in place. And the sewer really, that, that's going to follow the outfall of the net of that land, and so being a Loke's place, so that's not going to really change. I mean, we're not going, that sewer's going to be where it is based on just the topography of, of the, and, and the water line will just basically follow the road into the park. Now there will be another project, which is the extension of the water line down Browns Hill Road, but we're still acquiring easements for that project, and so that hasn't been bid to date. But that'll be increasing the size of the line on Browns Hill Road because of the demand that we've had from other businesses that currently exist on Browns Hill Road, upsizing that line from 2427 to the point that it is today, and then running that down to the park, and then connect to the water line that will be installed in the park as part of this project. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, the overwhelming majority of the revenue to cover this is coming from a North Carolina Department of Commerce grant that our staff sought. It's been about six months to 12 months ago to help offset the cost of this project.
Thank you, County Manager. Is there any questions for the County Manager? I believe we have to divide this into two separate votes. The first would be Amendment Number 2019-25. I think it was on top, to create the Riverstone Industrial Project Fund 217. We can get a motion to accept that amendment.
You could actually do budget amendment 2019, 25, and 2019, 26 together, because both of them are needed in order to, 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 to grade the project fund.
Is there a motion to accept those two amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion we accept the amendments 2019-25 and 2019-26.
Vice Chairman Morgan has made a motion to accept the two budget amendments as presented. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Fur. Is there any other discussion on this? Shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, County Manager.
Second part of that would be B, which would be to actually authorize staff to give a notice to proceed to the NJR Group to, for construction of this project as being the lowest responsive bidder, and you have the bid tab, certified bid tab in your packet.
Any questions for the County Manager? What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioner Lawhan to accept the project bid for NJR, being a local company. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chairman Morgan. Is there any other discussion on that? See none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Brings us to the public comment portion of our agenda. I don't see anybody that has signed up. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? All right, we'll do board member comments, and I'll start down here with Commissioner Lawhan.
Glad to see a good crowd here tonight. Invite you back to a non-ceremonial board meeting. We meet the first and third Monday night of each month, most months, so I do invite you to come back. I'm glad to see our sheriff and the chief deputy with us tonight. Congratulations to both of you, and I'm glad that your bosses are with you. And I saw our representative-elect Wayne Sasser, and I know Nancy's here, and we're glad to have you all, so thank you for being here.
Mr. Jordan.
Commissioner Lawhan pretty much said the majority of it. Thank you for electing us, and thank you for being here to support us, and I hope you'll come back and be active in the, in the process.
Mr. Barbie.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, I'm, I'm up here and I take the oath of office real serious, so I'm hoping anybody ever needs anything, I'm, I'm going to listen, so thank you.
Mr. Fur. Mr. Allman.
I just want to say thank you to the voters of Stanley County, and congratulations to the new sheriff and the new board members, and I look forward to working with you guys.
Mr. Morgan.
I'd just like to congratulate all you new board members. This job can be challenging at times, but it's very rewarding as well. I look forward to working with each and every one of you, and wishing, hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
County Attorney.
No comments, sir, thank you.
County Clerk. County Manager.
I've said enough this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll close it out. It is an honor to have you guys elect me as chairman. I hope I can fulfill it to the best of what you guys think I can do, and, and it, like I say, it's just an honor, and I don't really know how to put that into words for you guys, and, but I do appreciate it. I look forward to serving you all and the people of Stanley County for, you know, another two years. Thank you. Sorry, turned my mic off. I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss a personnel issue in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A6, and an economic development issue in accordance with General Statute 143-318.11A4. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Jordan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Fur. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. We stand in closed session. All right, I call the regular session of the Board of Commissioners meeting back to order. Is there any further business to discuss this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Morgan.
I move, I make a motion to approve the sheriff's salary, starting salary at 75.5, with a review in six months at our budget process.
A motion has been made to set the sheriff's salary at 75,500 dollars per year with the stipulation that it be reevaluated as part of the budget process in the spring. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second? Second from Commissioner Jordan. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Is there any further business to come before the board tonight? See none, we have a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye.